You're playing like the Cincinnati Bengals and all these teams that just put up these gaudy stats. Oh, I was so waiting for Jalen to throw for 300 because I had it ready to set.
Let's break Jeff Curran and see what he thinks of this meeting that the Eagles had. He joins us right now. Jeff, we gotta talk a little bit about the Phillies, but we will do that. Jeff, what's going on?
Phillies, Jeff Curran's got Phillies hangover.
Yeah, he was at the, I saw your tweet. You were at the stadium late, so thanks for getting up with us, Jeff. We appreciate it.
Yeah, no worries, Andrew. By the way, you guys, I, so I'll tell you why I'm a little late today. I didn't get home till two.
I think we was late.
Yeah, and my Apple Watch was like on like 5%. That's usually like my wake up call. I put it on the thing, but my charger. I wake up and I'm like, okay, I know I'm supposed to be on burns this morning. And I look at the time, I'm like, oh, it's like 8:45. So yeah, a little, little late, but uh.
Listen, you're working hard, man. We appreciate, uh, we appreciate you checking in and giving some time for us. Obviously, we're always appreciative of your time. So we do appreciate that. Uh, Jeff, we'll talk about the Phillies. That season's done. I'm sorry, but I think it's done.
Come on, it's not over.
You sound like our buddy Ed Kratz, season's over.
Well, it's not over yet, but do you think the Phillies are gonna win three of the next?
I don't, but all you gotta do is, is win one and you start to put pressure on. You just go one, one at a time. These five game series. You know, I'm a Yankees guy. They're probably done, but hey, they win tonight. Put a little bit more pressure, go win. Then there's a ton of pressure. You never know.
John, one of my favorite parts of yesterday's show was for the first time ever in my doing shows with you. You showed the fandom side of yourself.
I'm only a fan of one team.
I know, but I still loved hearing it because it was like, okay, good. John's got that too. He goes, leave, leave the Yankees in Toronto.
I'm only a fan of one team and that's the New York Yankees because I don't cover baseball. So I haven't. Believe me, if I covered baseball, I would not give a shit about the New York Yankees. I guarantee you because. If you cover it, it immediately becomes. All right. The, the old never meet your heroes thing. Never meet your heroes. Cause you, you will immediately uh become very detached. It's the way it is, but that's the only team I root for. I'm very honest about that.
I'm like that with the Phillies. Like I'm close with a lot of Phillies players and I talk to the same guys pretty much. Every single night and I get a lot of intel from them. Then. You hear stuff about your heroes or guys that you liked, maybe five, seven years ago, you don't like as much anymore. And it all kinda comes back.
And by the way, there's, there's a lot of people I root for on the Philadelphia Eagles, both in the front office and players because they're good dudes and you root for. You know, good people, good things to happen to good people. That's how I look for it.
That's how I say about, everybody likes to get on the Phillies bullpen. I said, well, I'll tell you what, as someone who knows a lot of the guys in that Phillies bullpen. They're very easy to root for and you don't know what's going on behind the scenes. You don't know how, why this play happens or that play happens. It's. And again, it's, you're not in there, that's fine, but just don't make generalizations. That's all I, that's all I ever said.
All right, Jeff, let's kick it over to the birds. They took their first loss of the year on Sunday and uh, you know, I, I think we've all collectively, the city of Philadelphia. Has forgotten what it feels like to lose a game. Welcome to the rest of the NFL, man. Everybody loses some games. Uh, but obviously yesterday, the lead story today, Jeff. Is they had a big meeting yesterday. Jimmy Kemsky put up a tweet during the Phillies game. I'm not sure if you saw it because you were.
I did see it, yeah.
Yeah, that they had a long meeting, a positive meeting was the word he used. Apparently it went multiple hours. What do you make of it, Jeff Curran? Saquon, AJ and Jalen Hurts meeting to try and get this train on the tracks.
My first initial thought when I saw Jimmy's tweet was, I think it was during the third inning in the Phillies game when it happened. Well, Saquon Barkley initiated this. Had to, because this doesn't seem like.
Dr. Bill, he's gonna get that endorsement.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like Jalen or AJ went to each other and, and said, hey, you know, let's, let's do a kumbaya here. It's, no. There's a reason why Saquon Barkley was in the middle of this. And of course, you know, um, Devin Kany and I were joking about it. We were talking, well, where's Devante Smith? Why is he left out of this, you know? But I mean, it's good. I mean, it's, it's clear you look. I, I forget who said it. Oh, the first where I heard it was for all you nineties sports movies fans, you Disney fans. Uh, Coach Ted O'Ryan from Mighty Ducks 3, you learn a heck of a lot more from losing than you do from winning.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, to me, I use the word performative. It's very performative. All they do is meet, Jeff. All day. That's all they do.
Oh, yeah.
Especially this week when they have no practice. It's all meetings. You have, you have a team meeting, an offensive meeting, a position meeting, meetings, meetings, meetings. Are they making too much of this loss? Cause I think they are.
I think they are too, because you're gonna lose football games. The Buffalo Bills lost a football game.
Exactly.
On Sunday night.
Business as usual. Business as usual.
I get it. It's a, I get it. You, you know, you've won 20 of 21. You want 10 in a row dating back to last year. You haven't lost a game. Your quarterback started and finished in 371 days. It's, it's very rare losses happened in Philadelphia recently, but. It happens and you're gonna lose games at some point during the season. Denver was always a good team. Maybe they're upset that they let that game get away. And maybe they.
Jeff, is it deeper though? I mean, and I, I, cause I agree with John in a sense of you, you can't let one loss change the way you operate and the way you do things. A business as usual makes sense. But we've heard about this relationship between AJ Brown and Jalen Hurts for a while now, dating back to. When Brandon Graham let the cat out of the bag, as John phrased it, or even maybe even before that.
It's been almost two years now, by the way.
That's what I mean. So maybe this issue is more about addressing that. To try and improve the product on the field as opposed to just, we lost a game, we have to meet. Does that make sense? Or do you, do you see that? Or am I on to something? Am I way off base? What do you think of that?
No, I, I, I mean, in a way, I think they're overreacting to the loss, but maybe. Saquon has been in this locker room for a year and a half now. He knows what's going on. It, it just feels like these two, Jalen and AJ need to come to a head here. Like, like it's, okay, and look, they do have a good business relationship, but. I, I don't know. What bothered me about Sunday's game and just, you ran the ball nine times. You threw the ball 80% of the time. It's.
Bizarre, bizarre.
Yeah, you're playing like the Cincinnati Bengals and all these teams that just put up these gaudy stats. Oh, I was so waiting for Jalen to throw for 300 because I had it ready to set.
Oh, you were looking at the, the stats and everything, I'm sure.
Jalen would get 20 garbage yards at the end and say, oh, by the way, guys, Jalen threw for 300 and they lost.
Oh, man.
I was ready for it.
Well, he should have if you had the, the AJ big shot, the uh.
Well, they would've won then. They would've won then.
Yeah, Jahan Dotson uh, almost caught that ball. I think he did, to be honest. Devonte called back by the illegal shift.
Saquon's penalty?
Yeah, Saquon's penalty, which was, you know, it's a proper call, but that's how close he was to getting over 300. You're right. Do you wanna play that way?
Yeah, it's, and like, that's the thing. Like, there are a lot of positives to take from that game in terms of the passing game, especially in the first half and in the third quarter. It's just. I just saw it bizarre that they were up 17-3 and you call one running play and all the passing plays you call are in the shotgun and the running play you call.
Third quarter, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't have a designed run in the entire third quarter.
That's nuts. Like, and, and that's the crazy part, John, right? Like, everything we say worked. You pass us out the run. I'm like, okay, they did that. Now they're gonna run the ball and. For some reason they did it. It's not like Denver scored right away either after they uh, took a 17-3.
No, it's bizarre. It was very bizarre. And that's why I, I, you know, if they would've just shut up and business as usual, I would've shifted the blame towards the coaching staff for this one, which I rarely do, I said, because. I'm always gonna. I don't think the coaches are important as the players. I think the players are more important. So when they play well, I give the players more credit. When they play poorly. I blame it more on the players. This one, I would've shifted to the coaches because of that ratio. And by that, I mean, you've heard me say this a million times, Jeff. Tell me what the score is and I'll tell you what the run pass ratio is. It works every time. Didn't work. On Sunday because they were out of their minds trying to either. Acquiesce outside voices or the inside voices, whichever you want. People are playing semantics. Well, why is it outside? It's AJ. Whoever. There were uncharacteristic trying to satiate somebody, whether it's Drew Brees saying it's the boringest offense in the history of the world. Or AJ Brown or Devonte Smith inside the building. Doesn't matter who. They went away from what they do to prove something to somebody else. They won't admit it, but actions speak louder than words.
Oh, yeah. And they know, they hear this stuff. I would say we'd hear someone like Jeff Saturday speak. Uh, he's on ESPN, but he's, he's on a pie. I like listened to his podcast, by the way. And he talked about this last week. I wasn't aware you had to apologize for wins. I, I, I like when my team wins. Who cares how you do it? The record is the record and you keep doing that until someone says, I'm gonna beat it. Denver didn't beat it. Yeah, they won the game, but Eagles are up 17-3.
Denver beat us at our own game, Jeff. Turnover free football, pounce on the opportunities when they come, run the ball consistently. I think Dobbin said 18, 20 carries for 80 yards or whatever it was, a gritty four yards a carry. And they won the football game in the end. Jeff, does um, does this meeting help this offense get on track? Cause I do think, look. I agree with the point of we lose one game and it's like, all right, welcome to the rest of the NFL. You're gonna lose a game, but let's call a spade a spade. The offense has been downright brutal this year. Downright brutal. At almost every level. Run, pass. No matter what they're trying to do, it doesn't look good. Now, you can blame Jalen, you can blame the offensive line, you can blame Kevin Patul, blame whoever you want. Does this? Give them a chance to get closer to being more successful in that offense?
I, I don't think it can hurt. Let's just put it that way. I mean, when you're 30th in yards per play. I, it can't hurt, right? And I think the Giants can help that because. Look, they're gonna play a football team that just lost to the New Orleans.
Giants will help it more than the meeting will.
They played the Giants, you know what? It was funny. Yeah. So if they would've won this game, John knows this. I probably would've went up to him after the game and said, he might be 8-0 by the bye.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I saw that yesterday. I'm pretty sure they're gonna be 7-1 by the bye at this point.
And by the way, if they go up and do what they're supposed to on Thursday night, please don't give me, I, I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to fans. Please don't give me, oh, the meeting worked. The New York Giants worked.
Yeah, they're a bad football team, guys. And like, if, if the Eagles lose to the Giants, then you can really.
Oh, then it's, then, then the wheels are off, man. If they lose this game, the wheels are off.
Yeah, it's, look, they should take care of this team. And honestly, I've watched enough Vikings games this year. I don't care if it's Car. But Carson Wentz may be a better option for the Vikings than JJ.
Not maybe. Come on, let's not kill Carson. Carson has actually played pretty well.
He's made some big throws too, man.
That was a big time throw, that game winner. That was a big time throw.
But if you're an Eagles fan, you want JJ McCarthy playing that game. You want him back.
Yes. I mean, Carson can at least do some things. And remember. They won that game in London and they were down five offensive linemen. They were down four of their five starters. Four of their five starters on the offensive line. And Darasol will be back. Jackson will be back. O'Neal might be back.
Yeah, he's still banged up.
So, yeah, you, you would much rather see JJ McCarthy.
I think, I think Will Fries is the only offensive lineman on that team that hasn't gotten hurt.
Yes, yes.
You're good for, well, you're good for a couple of turnovers probably from Carson. You got Jackson Dart in two of the next three.
Maybe if you're, if you're in the league.
You could, you could, you can right the ship here with three teams that you're, let's call a spade a spade, basically superior. They're a lot better too in NFL. You're not superior to anybody at all in NFL players, but. You got two, two teams coming up in the next three games that aren't so good. You got two, you have Jackson Dart, a rookie quarterback in two of them. And Carson Wentz, who, you know, we all know well, we all know who Carson Wentz is well. He can have four or five pick ways in the next couple of games. Win three. You're seven and one at the bye week and everybody in Philadelphia is, is clapping their hands. Yay, we're the best team in football. You know, that's where I think the overreaction to the loss is true.
Yeah. And look, if you're a Bills fan, you're probably thinking the same thing right now. Like you just lost to the Patriots, a team you've owned for years.
That was a, that was a brutal loss.
That was a brutal loss. Drake May was great in that game.
He was. That was, Stepan Diggs showed up. Stepan Diggs showed up.
A step on what? He had some of the proof Sunday night, I think.
Yeah, well, he, I hope he plays like that consistently because we forget how good of a receiver, some people do forget how good of a receiver he was. When he was in, you know, his early years, he was, he could run routes.
Phenomenal route.
I feel, I feel a lot better about my prediction on the Patriots for the season. I said, I thought they would be respectable. I thought they could be.
I do like Drake May. I do, especially compared to this group, past two, three years, the group of young quarterbacks. He's by far the best. So I do like Drake May. They're finally heading in the right direction. I still think we're not gonna know about this Eagles team till November 10th and November 16th.
And then we will know. Yep.
Then we will know.
It's gonna be, and, and that's unfortunate that we won't know that, but that's just how the schedule plays out.
Yeah. And specifically that Detroit game, and that Detroit game's here, so that helps, but uh. They're gonna have to score some freaking points in that game. They're gonna have to score some points.
After Detroit, I, I can't remember who they play after. I know Chicago's Black Friday, but who's the game?
At Dallas.
Oh, that's right, Dallas. That's the Dallas game. Okay.
Which is more difficult.
We have bye week Packers, Detroit.
Bye week at Packers, Detroit here, at Dallas, then Chicago here, which should be relatively easy. At the Chargers, Eagles fans will take over so fi.
And the Bears are in Philly, right? On Black Friday? That's the Black Friday.
Las Vegas should be easy here at Washington. And who knows, that, at those last three games at Washington, at Buffalo, Washington here.
It may not mean it.
They might mean everything. They might mean nothing for all of those, those, those teams. So. You know, Buffalo in theory should have the AFC East wrapped up. And, and if they're, you know, they might have to fight for seeding, but. It might be wrapped up.
All right, guys, trivia question. Who is, who is the number one seed in the AFC playoff standings right now? I know we're only five weeks in, but.
Jaguars, Jaguars.
It's not the Jaguars, but you got the right, you got the right division.
Indianapolis Colts.
Indianapolis Colts, yeah.
The uh, the uh. I'll tell you my five game MVP of the NFL, Daniel Jones.
Daniel Jones? Uh, Baker Mayfield deserves some consideration there too.
Baker Mayfield's my very football man. He really is.
I have an official vote and if we were voting, I would vote for Daniel Jones. He's the MVP of the NFL.
You can't argue it. I mean, for five weeks, it's, like, I think.
What a good coach can do for a quarterback. Maybe we get a little bit of that in Philly.
Good situation. You know, you have, they have a good off, Indianapolis has had a good offensive line for a while.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you.
They have a great running back who helps. It's funny, yeah. All quarterbacks need fucking help. All quarterbacks need help.
John, that's why sometimes, and I, I agree with your premise that coaching ain't as important as some people think, but I do think it matters. And that's where I'm wondering if Petula is not giving us the edge.
I'm gonna defend the guy that's probably hated by fans.
Well, I was talking more of talent, but.
I'm gonna defend the guy that's probably hated by fans here. And this is why I like to blame players over coaches. I didn't realize John Fagan could fumble the ball at the one yard line on a 74 yard touchdown run.
Well, and I, I love Jonathan. I'm a, I'm a big JG guy, as most people know, but um. He shouldn't have ripped the kid, the new asshole.
No, I, I, I didn't like that.
What'd you guys think? I was gonna ask, cause that's obviously viral all over social media.
He apologized for it yesterday too.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that. I don't know. I, I have a little bit of a different take. I. He fumbled the fucking ball at the one yard line. It's a professional game. Like dude, hold on to the ball. I get it. I get it. You don't wanna punch a player. I understand. Everybody's gonna give me that. I understand that. I'm just saying, I think we've gotten to the point where like, these players, you have to coach, but you're a coach.
I think it was the, I think it was the physical touching.
Yes, it was.
Now, I, I, you just do it behind the scenes. You do it behind the scenes.
You know what I would've said? Honestly, I would've walked up to him and said, thanks, kid. You probably cost me my job. That's all I would've said. I, I would've said that. I, I would've made it personal and said, you know what? You just cost me my job or you just cost the scheme a win.
JG can easily salvage his season. I mean.
Well, JG, JG comes from here and no team has a more focus on. Ball security than the Philadelphia Eagles. And the moment you walk into the auditorium, which is where they have team meetings. They have these big banners up, as Jeff knows. What are they, Jeff? All security.
All securities one. They changed it last week, by the way.
They did change it. And one of the things they put on there was letters and logos. What that means is. Look at the letters and look at the logo in the end zone before you drop the freaking football.
Yep.
They stress it every single day.
For those of you who do know, remember when Deshaun Jackson dropped the ball.
Yep, I remember it. I get it. Definitely worked for a good look that he, you know, he put his hand. I get that.
My point is, I'm sure, I'm sure Jonathan Gannon teaches the same thing. I'm a thousand percent sure. And the same thing has happened to Shane Steichen in Indianapolis, by the way. They had that same issue.
Yeah, Don Mitchell did it last week.
Yeah.
Colts could be 5-0 right now. They could be the last unbeaten in this.
But the point is, and here's about coaching. I, you, you can never be a hundred percent, I'm a hundred percent that Shane Steichen and Jonathan Gannon teach the same thing they teach here. Letters, logos. Player doesn't do it. I mean, you can blame the coach all you want. That's a player mistake. That's an example of a player mistake. Period. End of sentence. There's nobody in the NFL who's not taught that. The Eagles just harp on it more than most. And JG and Shane Steichen by extension harp on it more than most. Everybody harps on it. So you can blame coaches for that shit, but you'd be wrong because they're teaching that. I'm a hundred percent on that.
Why I wasn't, I wasn't, I don't think it's a bad thing to, 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 you know, discipline or be upset with a player. I guess the way he did it was certainly up for debate.
Well, yeah, the way he did it was, the, the way he did it was wrong. And to Jeff's point, he's already admitted that. He would admit it, yeah. He knows, he knows.
It's just a shame that that made the rounds like it did. And I'm sure in the moment, Gannon, well, actually he said that. I woke up Monday morning and didn't feel good about it.
I never even understood that, that like that uh, like you, you get a flag or whatever from celebrating. Alright, that makes sense. You know, you have, your emotions are high. You get up and you, you celebrate. You get a flag. I never understood why people would drop the ball before getting into the, I, I get it. It's close.
It happens every week now.
A lot, but I'm just saying, it's like, you know, for a league that, when you're down at the goal line, all you gotta do is get that ball across.
Trying to look cool, trying to look cool. Who's cooler than Walter Payton? Who's cooler than Barry Sanders and the freaking football to the official? That's cool. Act like you've been there before. That's cool.
John, I don't know if you remember, uh, you know, speaking of Barry Sanders handing the ball over. Do you remember when the NFL used to do like the top 10 list on the, on their network?
Um, not really.
So they have one, I thought it was the coolest thing they ever did. They did top 10 celebrations, touchdown celebrations of all time. And they're doing. Oh, no, they're doing all the flamboyant celebrations you can think of.
Redskins uh.
Yeah.
Fun bunch.
Like, you wanna guess what they picked as number one and no one saw it coming?
Hmm.
We just talked about it. Barry, Barry handing the ball to the ref. And, and it was so cool. Like they said, Barry Sanders handed the ball to the ref 127 times and they showed all 127. I'm like, that's awesome.
Yep, act like you've been there before. That's the coolest thing you can potentially do.
Yeah.
And yeah, that's the easiest way to cure it, but obviously people get excited. And when you don't score a lot of touchdowns, it's obvious Barry Sanders scored a lot of touchdowns.
If you're Jordan Davis, you don't hand the ball to the ref.
Exactly.
Jeff, how good are the 4-1 Eagles right now?
I still think they're one of the top five teams in football. I mean, let's be real. I mean, I'm actually a little more optimistic.
Agony offense? Because like now that we've lost, I think people, it's easier for people to face that.
Yeah, I, I think this defense has been a lot better than what I thought they were gonna be. And keep in mind, they, their best pass rusher is a guy that wasn't even on the team in week one.
I know. He's like, he's like so far, far and away the best looking pass rusher on the team. It's like not even close.
Yeah. And, and look, John and I said, Xander, you even agree with us. We thought the expectations were too high on, on Jalen's hunt. And it's showing. He is, he doesn't have a sack yet.
Yeah, John, about him, to, 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 to putting a cart before the horse.
Right about, right about Zedarius too.
Yeah.
That he would be the best.
Can you imagine if we didn't sign Zedarius?
Terrible.
That dude could get off the couch and, and rush the passer. Um, the problem, yeah, that, that's an NFL problem. Like why he bounces around. Well, I know why, because he's 33.
Yep.
And they, well, they don't wanna pay a 33-year-old guy.
And he doesn't view himself as 33. It's like he told me, I played football, I started playing football my senior year of high school. Yeah.
But it's amazing. All he does is production each and every year. And well, I don't know if we can pay this guy. And well, let's try, insert name. I don't wanna pick on Jalen's hunt, but give me a break. I mean. Those two are not even the same species as a pass rusher.
And I, I, and look, I think Jahai Campbell's had a great start. I think him and Zach, well, I mean, it's crazy. Like they have embarrassment at Richards at linebacker, who I thought. John, how'd you think Kaylee Ringo plays on that?
I thought he was fine. I thought again, that, for some reason, nobody's testing Kaylee Ringo.
I know. He, he shocked no one's texting.
Well, I think honestly, I think they didn't test him last week because they wanted to throw the ball to Courtland Sutton. And I think we all learned why they wanted to do that, whether Quinian was on him or not. I mean, they were throwing back shoulders to him and he was mossin'.
Well, I, I agree with that. Cortland was dominant. I mentioned that yesterday.
Remember the first, my guy, you remember the, real quick, the first drive too? Cortland also had, he beat Quinian down the field on the sideline and the ball went through his hands. So it wasn't just the fourth quarter. I know he didn't catch the ball, but. There was moments in that game where Cortland was really getting the better of.
He's a very good player. I say all the time, people don't pay attention to the opponent. He is a very good player.
And you know what? I don't think people pay attention to the Broncos. And, and again, understandable, right? You know, from, if you're an Eagles fan, you're not paying attention to them, but. I, I said all week, man, this, this Broncos team, I don't know how they're 2-2. I, one of the craziest stats I saw about the Broncos, I didn't realize it till I was prepping for the week. You know the Broncos did not trail in the fourth quarter at all until they played the Eagles?
Uh, I did not.
They, they lost on walk-off field goals.
Were final second field goals.
They lost on two walk-off field goals and they were leading when it happened.
With no time on the clock in both of them. That's crazy.
Isn't that nuts? Like, I'm like, wow, like the Eagles are up on this team in the fourth, like, they might have it.
Here's my question for you then. We're gonna have Chris Franklin, since we, we gotta run, but we're good. He's not in here yet. Um, what are your top three biggest concerns with this team? Because you know, AJ Brown, Jalen Hurts are meeting. The offense isn't good. Is it defense? Is it offensive? What are your top, is it Petula? What are your top three biggest concerns about the Eagles right now?
Pass rush? I, I, I'm really concerned about that. I think that's gonna be a concern all year. Two, I'm definitely gonna go on the offensive side of the ball here. I think it's continuity with the receivers. I, I, they gotta get on the same page. Devante Smith's right. They gotta get on the same page. I'll go with that. And three, um, Landon Dickerson and Cam Jergens. How injured are they?
Well, I don't think Landon's playing this week. Um, I think he's gonna be out for at least this game, you know.
I, I would give him time.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if he's out until after the bye. Um, so.
He was hobbling pretty good on that ankle when I saw him.
I, I, it's time to let Landon rest. I mean, at some point, I get it. If you're not hurt, if you're not injured, you play, but. He's like 30%.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna guarantee he doesn't play Thursday. I, I think he might not play. After the mini buy and then. Um, as well. So I, I don't think it's gonna be long term, but I, I think he's, he's gonna be out.
Landon's on that balance of, I love how he wants to be out there every single snap. Sometimes that's a detriment to your team, detriment to your team.
Jeff, we gotta run, brother. We got Chris. Your final thought, uh, we appreciate you coming on. A long night for the Phillies. Make sure you guys.
And by the way, they grinded. Give the Phillies credit.
Oh, I did. Well, you know what? My, my column was about how they finally got the momentum and the offense needs every single apath they can get and you decide to bunt.
Yeah, that, that was a terrible decision.
The bad car, was it just a bad fucking bunt? If you're Bryson Stott, there's one spot to not bunt the ball. I know it's harder, it's easier than said than done, but.
Nah, I hate that. Here's. Here's why I hate that decision.
It was a good bunt. The decision's terrible.
Yeah, the decision, the decision, first of all, you don't play that way. That's not how you play baseball for 162 games. And then you wanna change in the playoffs when things get heightened. No, play your, I don't like it, but the whole station to station baseball, nobody plays that way. And then you expect them to execute in the biggest moment? Terrible decision. Plus, they had the. Terrible decision. Plus they had the Dodgers bullpen. They couldn't get an out.
Yeah, you gave them an out.
Wrong.
And, and, and baseball is one of those sports. Sometimes you get one out. It just changes the trajectory.
Exactly.
Ryan Kirkering was telling me that last night. He said, I got the first out. He said, runs the second, third. Man, does that change everything? And. You know, obviously we know what happened with the play between him and Turner and Turner admitted to me after the game, I should have threw it sidearm. That, those are decisions that lose a baseball game. And of course we lost by a run. So.
Yep, no, no doubt.
But, but the bunt, like Rob Thompson's not had a good series. He has.
No, that was a poor decision. Poor decision.
Jeff, good stuff, man. Will the meeting fix the birds?
I think the Giants are gonna fix them. Come on, I, I, anytime I get a shot at the Giants, I'm gonna take it.
I got you. All right, Jeff. Good stuff. Thank you, buddy.
That sounds great. Thanks.